So, so we're all standing at the same place?
You gotta put that somewhere where it's safe. September?
Yeah.
This has all your details on it.
Oh, yeah.
This is your reservation.
Wow.
And then these are the times. I also bought a ticket for the ferry. So you show them this. This is your ticket for the ferry.
Oh, for the ferry to get over there.
It's only one ticket. And this tells you the time that you gotta get to MacArthur City to get out of the ferry. It's five. This one right here.
Does it have a schedule of what we do?
Oh, I can print that for you. It's online, but I'll have to print it.
Oh.
All right, can everyone hear me? Calling to meeting, or calling to order the city council regular meeting for June 18th. It is now 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Councilwoman Pashadlik, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
One more time, go live your best life, make a difference, touch a heart, inspire a soul, encourage a mind, and enjoy this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, in whose love we deliver the essence of our own.
All right, thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember Monaco.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Pashadlik.
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as written.
All right, I know there was, Councilwoman Pashadlik had mentioned to me. Did you want to make any changes or?
If we could remove the city attorney review as well as the city manager review and table those until the special meeting on the 28th, I believe it is.
And I believe you asked Mr. Albright and Ms. Walton about that. Did you guys have any issues?
It can be that meeting or a subsequent meeting after that as well. Because I think at the special meeting, I don't think the full council's gonna be there, correct?
I think so.
Is everyone gonna be at that?
I believe so.
Everyone, okay. I just want to make sure all the councilmembers are ready to take this.
Okay, Ms. Mayor, you want me to amend my motion to, or Margaret's amendment, to remove the two items, the reviews?
Sure, if you and Mr., or Councilman Monaco are both okay with that?
Yep. Oh, sure.
All right, all right, we have a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of those two items. Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
All right, moving on to approval, I'm sorry, moving on to hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard? Representative Eppert?
Thank you. Good evening. I am state representative Kimberly Edwards. Just wanted to come and invite everyone to our upcoming community conversation, which will be held this Thursday at the East Point Library at 6:00.
Can, I'm sorry, is that?
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me now? Okay. Much better, I'll start over. Well, I am state representative Kimberly Edwards. For those who do not know me, wanted to formally invite you to our upcoming community conversation, which will be held this Thursday at the East Point Library from 6:00 to 7:00. Our special guest will be the Michigan lead of consecrated voters. They will share updates on land, air, and water and how it affects your health. We also will be presenting the principal at the East Point High School with the new AED machine. I wanted to make sure everyone knew what we were gonna be doing this week coming up Thursday. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Cindy Federley, East Point resident. I want to address comments that were made at the last meeting about the road diet and limiting, or reducing the lanes to three. First of all, I want to know what the cost was to us for you reassessing from Grashit to Tuscany. That cost us money to have that readdressed. What is another traffic study going to cost us? When is the traffic study gonna be done? Because traffic is greatly reduced due to the construction happening now. If you reduce it to three lanes at Kelly, the traffic now between I-94 and Kelly can be quite hazardous with five lanes coming out of that shopping center area. If you reduce the lanes to three at Kelly, it's gonna back traffic up even more. And I feel that it's gonna be hazardous for, if there's any incident on I-94 and they're trying to route traffic off, it's just gonna be a mess. I just don't see where it makes any sense to have that happen. It is not gonna be safe for pedestrians to cross or to walk on Nine Mile Road if it's three lanes. The pedestrian that was cited as having died last, in the last few months on Nine Mile Road, was because they were crossing the street. Had nothing to do with them being a pedestrian walking amongst stores, which is what your goal is, to have walkability. So I think that you're not being reasonable looking at this. That's a really bad place for a lane reduction, in my opinion. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I am Tim Canais. I'm a resident here in East Point. I organize a mutual aid project in East Point called the EP Free Store. The mission of this organization is to support the community in a sustainable way by distributing donated items free of charge. So this can be clothing, household items. We distribute harm reduction items like fentanyl, xylazine test strips, and Narcan, sexual health items, and just general hygiene items. We have a free store stand that's open 24/7 across from Bellevue Elementary, where people can put stuff down and pick stuff up. It's pretty much just ran by everybody in the community. We are also working on getting free native perennial gardens for East Point residents through Adapt Ecology. You'll hear a little more about that in a minute. So alongside of all these things, we try hosting various events in order to foster camaraderie in the community. So like over the winter, we did an art show. And the next one that we're gonna be doing is on June 28th, the Pride event, where we're gonna have a multitude of different speakers educate on the history of Pride and the Stonewall uprising. We're gonna have free food, free clothing, resource tables, and a lot more. You can get more info on that at Facebook on EP Free Store. So the reason why I'm saying all of this is that we're trying to ramp up everything that we're doing. So we're gonna be needing a lot of volunteers. We are a 501(c)(3), so that means that people who need to do community service can volunteer with us. Again, reach out on Facebook if you're interested in doing anything with that. We want to grow as big as possible, we want to do as much as possible to make the community better. Lastly, I volunteer with the Community Garden. If you haven't been there, you're missing out. Community Garden is a gem in the city. It's filled with amazing volunteers that passionately grow free food for the community. Last year, I believe, we did about 1,000 pounds of food. So this goes out on a stand up. Anybody can come and get it or get it taken to the senior citizens' homes. So I saw on the agenda that we were discussing redoing the parking lot. And I would like to say definitely that's something that we should really look into because it is hazardous right now. We want to try, moving forward, make this so that we're ADA certified and that we can have people get back there safely. So people with mobility issues right now can't do it. So that's pretty much it. I was here for that and for the free air conditioning.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick Chavadon. I'm also an East Point resident. I just wanted to expand on what you were saying with the free native perennial gardens. They are free of cost. You don't have to be an East Point resident, but you, you know, in the general area, it's all volunteer based. Only thing we ask that you supply is mulch. It's through Adapt, Community Supported Ecology. You can also contact the Free Store and we can send you a link to it. It's a good option for people who don't want or can't have a tree in their easement. All free of charge, also looking for volunteers. The group that I'm working with is also a nonprofit, so you can use volunteer. If you need volunteer hours, you can, we can answer you some for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Donnelly, also an East Point resident and also here on behalf of the Community Garden. Just to let everyone know, we have started harvesting this year. Thanks to some fantastic planning by some of our volunteers, not me, we were able to get some early spring harvests in. So we've already donated and grown almost 100 pounds of food. And our free produce stand is open every Saturday from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. We have right now salad greens going, root vegetables like carrots and beets and turnips. Maybe the peas will survive this heat wave. And I even saw some tiny little squash and zucchinis on the plants today when I went and harvested. So get your zucchini bread recipes ready.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Richard Dunlich. I live on Forest. Been a resident since '53. One important thing is your audio system here. For anybody up in age with a hearing disability or so, it's almost impossible to hear any of the, the people report back to, to listen to what anybody says. You know, I was with two or three other senior citizens and they had to walk out because they could not hear a thing. I was in Warren and I was in Sheboygan. And both of theirs are way beyond your expertise, you know, or a lot better. So anyway, that's something you might consider someday and check into, you know. But anyway, I was wondering when they're gonna fix that fiasco. They're talking about making another one on Nine Mile Road and Kelly, you know, like they did on Nine and Grashit here, which turned out to be a disaster. You know, I told the chief of police, I said, "That's not gonna last, that's not gonna last 30, 30 days." You know, it lasted 15 before somebody mowed the whole thing over. And in the meantime, there's still many cars drive over that and take their oil pan out, you know, because you still, what, how much does it take to level that off? I can't understand that. But anyway, getting back to my situation, like I said, you know, the old saying, "You can't fight City Hall," which is 100% true in East Point. So anyway, I had a tree in front of the house, which I planted when I got married, which was 1953. So anyway, it was the old, and then I put an oak tree in there. The only tree left in the whole, two trees left in the whole block. So I talked to Joe Marucci about it. He says, "We'll take care of it." He said, "I'll just trim it up for you. It's got a few red branches in it or so." So this carol that works there, she finally took over the situation. She waited till I was gone for four or five days, came over and cut the tree down. Cut this huge, beautiful Chinese elm down. There was nothing wrong with it. She said, "Well, it was dead." You know, it absolutely crushed me. So anyway, but that's, that's the situation.
Do you have 30 seconds?
And then they said, "Well, we'll cut the stump out and everything like that and replace it with whatever tree you would like to have." So they took half the stump out. Half of it is still sticking above the ground. There's still nothing done. I checked with, I don't know who's running the show now over at the municipal building. But anyway, so I talked to him. He sent somebody out. He measured it. He measures on the end where it goes down four inches and that's it. So anyway.
Thank you, your time is up. But can I ask you to go over and leave your information with Mr. McCain in the corner?
Okay.
Can you raise your hand, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Denise, East Point resident. Some of you may recognize me from the last city council meeting, where I talked about the issue of not being notified before my grass was cut. So I didn't realize until speaking with some long-term community residents that what I should have emphasized was the fact that they came into my backyard. They opened my gate and went into my backyard. I was told that at no point were they supposed to open the gate and enter into my backyard. And then that is actually, after reviewing the security footage, that is the first place that they went, is into my backyard. So if this grass cutting ordinance is about the front yards, that is not what they were worried about when they came to my home. So the, the first thing that they did was they immediately went to my backyard. And then I have security footage of most of the things that happened. And then they just, they completely did not respect my property at all. In one of the videos, you can see one of the men walking back out to the truck because they had not brought out their equipment at that point. He walks out to the truck and he just shoves the other side of my gate open. And then they pulled out their equipment from the truck. They started weed whacking my flowers and my landscaping. And then the other one mowed one strip of my front lawn and then immediately went into the backyard. So not only is this an invasion of my privacy of them going into my backyard, but it's a violation of my rights as a homeowner. The contract with the city of East Point should not and does not give them permission to trespass on my property like they did and to treat my property with such disregard like they did. So I'd like to know, I know it's on, on the agenda, so I'm gonna stay and listen. But I'd like to know what is gonna be done about the lack of notification, but also about the fact that this company took it upon themselves to trespass on my property. I'd also like to know how much they charged the city for the, for the privilege of trespassing on my property and how much the city would have charged me if I had not complained enough that it got voided out. I'd also like to see the images that I was told they're supposed to take to prove that they did in fact have to come and cut the grass. So I'm, I also wanted to say that I'm a little bit disappointed on the lack of follow-up that I've received on this matter. The only reason that I knew that it was going.
You have 30 seconds?
The only reason I knew it was going to be on the agenda was because of a chance meeting with one of the council members at a community dinner. So my information was taken after the last meeting, but I didn't, I didn't receive any communication. I have video evidence, like I said, specifically showing them immediately walking to my backyard, the new position of my furniture after they threw it, which led me to the conclusion that it was thrown. And I have the obvious documentation of them throwing open my gate.
Your time is up?
Yeah, thank you.
Karen Moragian, East Point resident. So I want to start out, there are, there are those who are looking for this vehicle, but the more eyes, the better. So it is a silver, possibly 2008, 2013 Tahoe or Suburban. There is rust on the driver's side by the rear wheel. I was given a plate number of E as in Edward, V as in Victor, G as in George, 2758. And the plate I saw myself is E as in Edward, K as in Karen, Y as in yellow, 4256. So there's some little jerk who thinks it's really funny to constantly drive by my property and throw their trash out the driver's side window onto the sidewalk and onto my lawn. And I know this person's tied in with the nuisance tenants next door to me. Now I have my proof. So it's just a matter of time before this individual is caught. There's just a lot going on in the city that needs to be addressed, and it's not. You know, I can't remember the exact year, but I do know we have a nuisance tenant ordinance. And it specifically states the property owner is responsible for abating the nuisance. However, when you contact the resident agent or the property owner, it's the same old response over and over and over again. "What do you want me to do about it? The rent's paid, call the police." And then the police get pissed because they don't want to keep having to deal with these calls. I understand there are far more serious calls they need to respond to. But you know, this is going absolutely nowhere. We have nuisance landlords that are clogging up the court docket, and it's ridiculous. You know, how many times have they evicted their tenants for non-payment of rent? And yet the tenants are still there. They're creating all kinds of disruption and nuisance in the neighborhood. They're harassing.
You have 30 seconds?
They're harassing others, they're causing property damage. You know, there's a lot going on. And in regards to, oh, the fireworks, the special permit? For the love of God, vote no on that. I want to leave you with this. Fireworks, traditional fireworks emit the same toxic chemicals as wildfires. It's bad for the environment, it's bad for the animals, it's bad for those with PTSD.
Your time is up.
We need to stop terrorizing everyone over that, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mary Hillary Ford, East Point resident. Couple of things I wanted to address. One is the need for candidates for the school board. We really need good candidates for the school board. Deadline July 23rd by 4:00 PM because we still have a chance to turn the district around. I've said this before and I'll keep repeating it. I am not running and my term is up this year. But I think that concern about what's best for all the students and the teachers should be of utmost importance to everyone living in the city. We need to have a school district that people will want to put their kids in. And until we do, we could have some problems. The other issue is, I'm involved with McComb Health Equity Council and have been. This is the third year we've been involved. And basically what we're doing is pulling together data that amplifies or notes the inequities regarding healthcare for a lot of people, especially minorities. And so this is the impact report. And if anybody would like to know what we're doing, we encourage you to look at the information, get involved, and become a resource agent. Because people need to know. One of the biggest problems we have in McComb County is people don't know where to turn. And we're here. There's a lot of good information regarding a lot of different things. We're working on transportation for a number of other things. So please, share the information. And if anyone wants a copy of this report, send me a message on Facebook because I didn't bring enough for everybody, but I will gladly bring it out to you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed and we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Item A for special meeting, May 31st, 2024.
Ms. Mayor, I would move to accept the minutes of the special meeting on May 31st, 2024.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Monaco?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Item B, regular meeting minutes for June 4th, 2024.
Motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of June 4th, 2024.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
And item C, closed session minutes for June 4th, 2024. Could I get a motion?
Ms. Mayor, I would move to accept the minutes of a closed session meeting of June 4th, 2024.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to scheduled hearings. Item A, public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget and tax rate. So with that, I will open the public hearing on that specific topic. If anyone wants to speak specifically to that topic, would you like to be heard now? Would anyone like to be heard? All right, seeing none, that public hearing is closed and we'll move on to unfinished business. Or we have no unfinished business. Move on to reports from administration, city manager's report, Ms. Walton.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, I just want to ask this question. Are we broadcasting okay? People can hear us out there in the public? Does somebody know that?
Yes.
Yes, what?
We are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you. First, I'd like to highlight, Ms. Denise, I'm sorry I didn't catch your last name. I was under the understanding that the building department did reach out. I apologize if that did not happen. They were supposed to be informing you that it was on the agenda. And I do appreciate that you have the footage, so we will reach out to get that to hold the contractors accountable. So thank you for coming today again. Next, I'd like to thank the police department and DPW for their involvement and commitment to the Grashit cruise for having a safe cruise. And I know. And I know Harvey Curly will go into that next, so I won't go too much into that, but thank you to our departments that continue to show up and do a great job for that. We also got the opportunity to meet our police, K-9 Digo. He is, his handler is Officer Severini, he was at the cruise as well, and just finished his five-week training, well, their combined five-week training. So we appreciate Officer Severini and his family for the incredible commitment that he has taken on, and are very excited to see K-9 Digo at future events and engaging with the community as well. Just a reminder about water filters. They are still available here at City Hall, at the library, and at DPW until the end of September. After September, they will be available only by request from the MDHHS. So if you'd like to get a replacement filter or a actual filter, you haven't already gotten one, please get one here from City Hall before they change that operation at the end of September. I'd like to announce that Abby Bond has been appointed as our library director. She was sworn in today, so congratulations to Abby Bond. She's been an employee for several years and very committed to library science and moving the library forward, and has studied under our previous director, Sue Todd. And the Library Commission was actually, prior to the Library Commission meeting today, was in attendance for her swearing in. The annual general membership meeting for the Chamber of Commerce is this Thursday at 8:30 AM. If you're interested or a business owner in the community, we invite you to attend that. Nine Mile Utility Work is finishing, so as many of you have probably noticed, there are many cones that are down on Nine Mile, which is great, but there will be continued work, so just be aware that some cones may pop up in certain areas and to be safe with workers that are in that area. Our Economic Development Team also just finished the nine days on Modern Nine of supporting over seventeen businesses on Nine Mile and all of the unique things that they offer. So thank you to our Economic Development Team and all of the businesses that were featured, and we're excited to continue that support over the next several years as we continue with the Nine Mile construction. The Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission has planned a Juneteenth celebration at four o'clock tomorrow here at City Hall. All invited to attend. They also have an incredible band, Soundproof, which we all have probably heard at many of the previous events, so we welcome everybody to celebrate Juneteenth here at City Hall tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And then lastly, I've had notification from RARE that they're planning their annual pride event, Pride in the Park, and I believe there's also a movie afterwards on July 18th at 6:30 PM, so we'd invite you all to attend that as well. With that, Mayor and Council, I can answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Finance Director's report, Mr. Blum.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The only thing I have tonight is an update on the tax foreclosure process with the Macomb County. We have the list. It's about sixteen properties, again, about a fifty-fifty split between vacant property and homes. They're only focused on homes that are in disrepair as they're still waiting on a number of lawsuits to get finalized. The process that they're doing this year, well, I don't expect we will ever get right of first refusal again based on the outcome of some of these lawsuits. But in September, there will be an auction, an online auction for the properties. They will be doing both back taxes and the current 2024 taxes, as well as anything that we submit that came in after March 1st that is not on the tax bill, we could put in a claim for any excess funds. But the minimum bid will be back taxes plus 2024 taxes, which is a change from last year. They were not including current taxes in the minimum bid. So that's good news. Anybody that bids on it will be keeping us whole anyways. And then if nobody buys them at the September auction, we will have a chance to purchase the properties at the minimum bid. And if we don't want them, which I don't think we do, there will be another auction with no minimum in November. And then if nobody buys them at that point, then they will give them to us unless we tell them we don't want them. But that is the process for this year, and I know they're still waiting on at least three different lawsuits, both federal and state, to get finalized on the tax foreclosure process. So.
So this year, they're not doing right of first refusal at all?
Nope. They have not done it for the past three years because of these lawsuits. One of the challenges was that there was, they called it collusion between the county and the locals by giving us right of first refusal to buy them and not putting them out to public auction. So the county has taken the stand, so they will not offer it to us at the back taxes own. It has to go to a public auction first.
I might send you a follow-up email-
Sure.
About those lawsuits, I want to take a look at them. I actually just looked at the Macomb County website. They still have it listed on there that the process involves a right of first refusal, but I guess that might have been-
They haven't updated or they-
Yeah.
They have formally changed it, they're just not doing it right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Moving on to City Attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. At the last meeting, I reported that I had received notification that the city would be receiving several opioid settlement payments. Two days later, Mr. Blum did confirm that the city was in receipt of five of those payments in addition to one that I was not aware of from the Walmart settlement, the amount of $65,344.02. Mr. Blum had also asked me whether those payments were one-time payments or whether we would be receiving additional funds. I did confirm with the case manager that the city will be receiving additional funds from those various sources. The case manager just doesn't know what those amounts are going to be, but as soon as she has that information and it's downloaded to the portal, I'll also let the council know what those amounts are going to be. And then I'm still waiting for the paperwork to register for the Kroger settlement. Once I receive that information, I'll register, and the city will be eligible to receive an amount off of that settlement as well. That's all I have, Mayor. May I answer any questions?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Albright? Thank you very much. We'll move on to new business. Item A, second reading and adoption ordinance number 24-1236. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to give second reading and adoption and adopt ordinance number 24-1236 to provide for the annual appropriations for the city of East Point for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2024 and ending on June 30th, 2025.
Is there support?
Support.
Did anyone have any questions or comments on this?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make, I guess, as brief of a comment as possible. Yes, I'm at the point where I do not want to vote in favor of this, mostly because of the water bill, I'd say. We've, you know, a long time ago, in 2017, when we did the huge increase, it was like thirty-something percent at the time. We had talked about remaking our water, like, operations, rainy day fund, I guess you could call it. And we've gotten to that point, but now we've kind of increased that goal with, City Council didn't talk about it at all. We're past that goal and we're still increasing. If I have it right, the mixed rate increase was 5.8% after we reduced it from the initial proposal by City Admin. I think we should be even going back to that 2.5 million amount, at least having a discussion if it should go higher. And then also, I guess, I just would maybe vote against approving this budget because of an added, added police officer for the public safety budget. I think we've, we've done, added a lot of positions in public safety over the last few years. So I guess that's just my major comments on the budget.
All right. Did anyone else have any comments? I mean, I guess I'll just comment that I was on the fence about the public safety addition. Frankly, our discussion, I think, between, not only from our chief, but also from Ms. Walton's explanation, I was satisfied that that was a needed position for this year. And I guess that's, well, I'm glad to see that the percentage went down from the initial proposal on the rate increase, and that's all I had to comment on that. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, and maybe one more comment. We are approving then a $300,000 deficit with this budget also, so I guess that'd add to why I'd like, think we shouldn't add one position at this time, even, probably should have looked at some other things, but we usually come in, or on average, we come in under budget. So I'm not super, super concerned, but $300,000 deficit, I guess, is unusual for us to adopt, or we should make it unusual, at least, so.
I don't disagree with that at all.
So, that's all.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yeah, or, no, sorry, no.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item B, approval of budget amendment number, or BA 24-05. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, can I ask one quick question first-
Sure.
About the, Mr. Blum, I guess, I'm guessing, would be able to answer this. What does the contractual buyouts mean for the Public Employee Healthcare Fund, just so everyone knows and I know?
With the last command officer contract, we offered a buyout of retiree healthcare. This just reflects the number of employees that took it, and the results of that will be reflected in our June 30th actuary. Last time we did it, we had a significant positive impact on our actuarial report, so.
Okay. Thank you. I guess with that, Mr. Mayor, then I'll make a motion that we, I guess, let me pull up the recommended motion here, just motion to approve budget amendment, BA 24-05 is presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, delinquent special assessments. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, a motion, we authorize the Finance Director to place delinquent special assessments on the summer 2024 tax bills in the amount of $57,701.53.
Is there support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item D, approval of the special land use for property located at 24340 Grashit Avenue. Would anyone like to make a motion, or did anyone have any questions?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize the Finance Director to place delinquent special assessments on the summer 2024-
Wait a minute.
Please erase that.
It's already live on YouTube, you were asking, Mr. Curly.
Harvey will take a brief five-minute nap.
Did you want me to make a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. I'll motion, we approve the proposed special land use for an automobile dealership at 24340 Grashit Avenue, based on the findings of fact in the planner's review letter dated May 30th, 2024.
Support.
All right. Did anyone-
Yeah, just a delightful comment, if I will, that, you know, we get people to say that East Point is dead and we can't recover. Well, this is what you call recovery. This is what you call people who are, who have invested time and energy and dedication and money to this beautiful city, and I applaud you folks for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item E, approval of the special land use for the property located at, located at 24717 and 24757 Grashit Avenue. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, a motion, we approve the special land use for an automobile dealership at 24717 and 24757 Grashit Avenue, based on the findings of fact in the planner's review letter dated May 30th, 2024.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, approval of award of the 2024 CDBG solar streetlight contract. Did anyone want to make a motion on this? Or have any comments?
Oh, it is F, right. I would move to award the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Solar Street Lighting Program to One Call Energy in the amount of $126,679.75, and future approve the allocation of funding from the Street Light Fund for the installation and additional ten lights at the same cost by OneCell Energy in on adjacent residential streets that are not eligible for Community Development Grant Fund.
Is there support?
I'll second that.
All right. Did anyone have any questions on this?
I had a couple quick questions, Mr. Mayor, and one of these I would have asked ahead of time, but I thought I was going to find the answer before I came in. We're talking about, well, so we're adding streetlights to the residential side streets, and then there's also the other portion of this to, to an additional ten lights with this company at 11,000 each on Nine Mile as we do Phase Two here. How did we do the streetlights for Phase One, I guess, was my question? Because I could not, I don't remember voting on that, and I don't recall how we handled that.
Do, yeah, I mean, your question's essentially where the funding came from for the lights, right?
Yeah, and how did we, yeah, approve it, or who was the contractor to?
Oh, I have no idea who the contractor was. The first round, we spent $150,000 of CDBG money and approximately $120,000 of streetlight funds to put in the first round. As far as this round, none of those are going on Nine Mile, they're going, there's, the additional ones are still going in the subdivision areas, just non-CDBG areas. And we do have, current year, we have $170,000 for installation, and the next fiscal year, we have $120,000 for a total of 290. And we're only asking for 110 with this round, because we believe there's going to be another CDBG round coming up that we would use that funding for.
Okay. I guess, actually, my question, though, is Phase One of Nine Mile, not of the-
Oh, the nice lights there. Okay.
Yeah.
That was approved by council. I couldn't tell you what meeting, but it was approved by council. It's going to be part of our monthly DTE bill for the streetlights. It hasn't hit yet because they haven't finished the project, but that will also be coming out of the streetlighting fund.
And then, so we did a special bid just for the street lighting on Nine Mile?
Well, it's through DTE, so-
Oh, okay.
It was, the contract was approved by council with DTE to put those in.
Okay, okay. Okay, so then I guess, I think I was a little confused by our brief here then on the, on the agenda for today. I thought we were saying we'd do the 110,000 on residential, or, well, the 126,000 total on side streets, and then also we, I thought we were proposing right now to pay for ten of the lights on Phase Two of Nine Mile with the same contractor, but that's not the case.
That is not the case.
So we're doing $126,000 worth total. Some are CDBG and some aren't?
No, it'll be 236,000 total. It's just, 126 will be CDBG and 110 will be streetlight fund. We bid it on a per-product item with the ability to request additional poles, which is why we're able to utilize this contract for the additional ten.
Shouldn't we mention that additional amount, probably in our motion?
It's got financial impact, 110, but that could be added to the motion.
Okay. So it's the 126 plus 110?
Correct.
Can we, so, can we amend that motion just to have 126, 679, 75, plus 110, just right in the same line?
I think Mr. Curly-
Yeah.
Councilman Curly, um, originally made that motion? Is that fine, Councilman Curly?
Would you be okay with that amendment?
Sure.
And I seconded, I believe.
I think so.
Oh, yeah, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, and it's, it's probably random one. With respect to them being solar streetlights, I mean, we're, we live in Michigan, and there are days where we go without any, any sun. So how do those operate with respect to those periods of time where it's not as bright out? Do they run, is it like a?
The, the company, um, or the, the product that is being purchased has been, um, studied, they actually base it on your, um, longitude, latitude, wherever we, however far north we are, um, and they base it on, uh, the shortest day of the year, and how much sunlight there would be. These lights will be charfully charged for three days on the shortest day of the year. So they're designed to actually, um, handle the, the cloud cover we have here in Michigan in the winter.
Thank you.
Yep.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Uh, item G, approval, uh, approval and schedule of the public hearing for proposed industrial development district. Did anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would move to schedule a public hearing on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, for proposed industrial development district for Winter Sausage Manufacturing Company at two two zero, one, one, Grashit.
Support.
Right.
Yeah, a couple, is anybody here from Winter Sausage? No, okay, uh, me being an old-fashioned guy, and I know there's been a few different opinions for, they've been there seventy-three years, did you know that? Seventy-three years, and I'm, get the word out to them that I am begging them to keep the steer on top of the roof. That steer is an icon. People come into East Point, and they see that steer, and they say, oh, that's right, that's Winter Sausage, they've been here since, in the fifties, so, please, somebody, in the administration, you could, that, uh, we got a message from Harvey, that, keep that steer.
All right, any other, uh, questions or comments?
Sure, I had a question, not about the steer. Do we have an idea of, um, what this will look like in terms of the, uh, amount of money the, um, the industrial district would save them in taxes? I ask, we did this in, um, twenty sixteen with Sigma Manufacturing on Ten Mile, um, and I was just curious if we had any sort of, uh, idea on that before we got to public hearings and things like that?
Um, I've seen nothing as far as their plans and how much they spent, plan to, um, spend on the expansion. The tax credit would be fifty percent of whatever that value is, um, but even fifty percent of, is more than zero, which is what we're getting now. Uh, that's why these work, especially for expansions, so.
So when, when they make improvements on the building, because I thought, unless, um, I'm mistaken, the taxes are essentially not reassessed at, like, the full amount unless there's a change of ownership. So when you do improvements to the building, how come, um, like, the taxes would only, I thought they'd still only go up by, you know, inflation or five percent, whichever's less, because of, um...
It'll, the existing building will not be changed, tax basis. Um, it's the expansion, that will be new construction, and that will be additional taxable value added onto the building, and the, the tax facility would, um, basically allow it to be half of, uh, whatever that expansion value is.
Oh, so it'd be, like, brand new, and then we, without this district, we'd tax it however much that new amount?
Correct.
Would be, so it's basically, it's starting from scratch?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
That was my question to Mr. Blum right before the meeting, too, that it's new construction, so it's, it ends up with additional revenue, not cutting us back.
Yeah, and are they all twelve years? I saw the last one was, um, twelve years. I don't know if that was, like, a standard thing for them?
I, I, I don't know what they were asking for.
I don't think it was in the letter. Just was curious, uh, and just not saying, you know, Winter Sausage has been here much, much longer, since nineteen fifty-one, but when we did this with Sigma in twenty sixteen, they then, two years later, sold their business, um, after purchasing for a hundred and twenty thousand and then sold it for two point four million, it looked like. So, I guess, does that, that continues on with the next owner, it looked like, or does it not? I was trying to look at the amounts.
Sigma was an interesting one, they went through the whole process, got approved by the state, and then never filed the final paperwork, so they never got approved for the tax exemption, and then turned around and flipped the building and walked away. So there was never any impact to the city on the, um, IFT.
Okay, that is kind of how the numbers look, they kept going up at some amount that I thought seemed...
It was...
Normal without doing too much math.
Well, once they go through our process, there's a whole state process they have to go through, and the state's the one that actually will give them final approval. And they just never signed their last piece of paper, so.
And do you know, does it stick with the, uh, business, or does it stick with the property, then?
Um, I would have to go back and read the statute, but I believe it stays with the property.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Uh, moving on to item H, approved purchase of software program, City Works for Department of Public Works and Services. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move, we purchase software program, City Works AMS, uh, licensing and implementation from local contractor, Ritter GIS of Northville, Michigan, and AMS's asset management system.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Uh, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Item I, discussion on grass cutting ordinance, uh, I guess, would anyone like to open this up with, any comments?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I guess, one very brief one, I think we should be giving some sort of, I don't know what the amount, time would be forty-eight, seventy-two hours or something, before we, um, go forward with cutting a lawn. I don't think we should be cutting without some notice ahead of time, um, on the properties in the city, I guess, is, I think my main thing after reading the ordinance. I don't know if there's other points, other councilmembers.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could someone, um, go through the whole process of what we do, start, starting at zero, and notifying somebody's yard is more than six inches, what, what kind of a notification that, that we do, and how do we get somebody out there to cut the grass?
Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, the ordinance, uh, currently states that the city clerk, um, which happens to be me, um, notifies, honor before March first of each year, uh, the notice of requirements for the ordinance, which means you can't have the grass or noxious weeds, um, over the six inches. So we publish that notice, um, in the papers that we publish, all of our other requirements, um, uh, public hearings in with the McComb Daily. We don't have any form, form of notice, um, similar to our grass ordinance, which we do have, um, the, the, um, notice ahead of time for snow removal. We do not have that requirement, um, for grass, so that has been the operation of grass cutting. I don't know if there's any specific additional detail that you're looking for, Councilmember Curly?
No. So we, so we put that in a paper, right, notice about if it goes more than six inches, someone's going to come out and cut your grass, and there's no other notification, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, let's take, let's take me, for instance. I don't get the news, I don't get the free press, I don't get the McComb Daily, but it is an e-sider, is that correct?
McComb Daily.
Okay, I don't get the McComb Daily. What do I do? I've got my, am I screwed because I don't get, because I don't get the newspaper, and that's the only notification we have?
So it's not the only notification, it's the notification that we're required to provide. We've, um, had, like, springtime has sprung notifications that we provide here in City Hall, um, it's on our cable channel, we've put it in our newsletter. So we try to advertise it as many places as possible so that people are aware, but, I mean, I'm not opposed to the notification, and I understand the expectation. I think it may also assist with, um, providing notifications so that people actually cut the grass, and we don't rely on the contractor to just do it. So I'm not opposed to it, I'm just explaining what our current process has been.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to confuse, uh, when we're speaking about notification, general notifications of the ordinance and individual notifications. So right now, we're not doing individual ones. If I understand Councilman DeMonico's point, I, I do think we should be giving notice, uh, to these specific properties before we cut. Uh, I don't know whether that should be twenty-four or forty-eight, I think seventy-two would be a little long for, for what I think neighbors and things like that would want. So I guess maybe a forty-eight hour notice posted, I would think the most efficient way to do it would be to the door of the, uh, building. I know mailing can take a couple days, so it wouldn't make sense, we'd probably be doing it by the time they even get the notice any, uh, anyway. So that's what I would like to see, um, I do think that would require a, or at least I would request an ordinance change to put that in there.
So, um, if I may, Mayor, um, how, how, how far behind are the people that cut our grass now, how far behind are they?
Um, I mean, I think they have several properties left to cut, I don't know exactly what's on their list, um, but I know, I mean, I get regular complaints. Um, so I'd say there's at least fifty properties that are on their list to cut, um, at a minimum.
Darren, you want to talk? Okay, I, I, uh...
If I can add to, and I, I think I sent all of the billings that we've had since May to Mayor and all of council. Um, and the, um, company, the contractor that is cutting, is cutting between thirteen and thirty properties a day, so it just depends, so, um, I mean, fifty is a conservative number, but they are cutting between thirteen and thirty properties per day.
Okay, so, let's, let's take the high one, let's, we always want to think high, let's say thirty. They're doing thirty a day, you said we're be, they're behind fifty, that's forty-eight hours. So within forty-eight hours from tonight, they should be done Friday morning.
Grass just continues to grow, so it's a non-stop problem is the issue. So I'm not opposed to the notification, again, I think it'd be helpful, um, I also think it gives notice so that, um, our, um, residents are cutting the grass, and they know, you know, that, that their grass is, is high and should be cut, and has reached the violation of the ordinance, and it provides them time to actually cut it within that timeframe that, that has been spoken of, um, and then refrains from utilizing the contractor and having so many properties to cut. I am not opposed to that.
And what is a resident's charge once this, I don't want, I don't want you to name the company, that's okay. How much is a resident's charge once this company cuts the grass?
I believe it's one fifty, I believe it's one twenty-five, um, initially, and then, is there an additional put on top of that? Um, so I believe it's one fifty, so, the one twenty-five is, is direct to the company, and then there's an additional twenty-five administrative cost that is added on to that.
Okay, good, you caused me to answer another question, explain, explain the twenty-five dollars administrative costs, what does that mean?
Sure, um, so the billing department has to be self-sufficient, so anything that, uh, the building department operates, or whatever work that they do, they have to account for. So the time that it costs for, um, our code enforcement officers to follow up with the property, the time that it costs for our, uh, union clerks to input everything, so they have to upload pictures, um, assist with the billing, that is the cost of doing that work.
Okay, well, I'm done for a while. I, I, I agree with Councilman DeMonico that, uh, I, I think the folks, we got living proof sitting out here where flowers and plants and, good God, I don't know what else was destroyed, but what would, what would we have to do, Darren's going to answer this. What do we have to do to go out there and put a three-by-five card on their door and say, y, y, your grass is over six inches, and it will be, you will be charged, uh, unless you cut it within the next, whatever.
That's it, you just have to post something on the door, possibly take a picture of it so there's proof that there was there, and, um, follow up the next day, or forty-eight hours.
I have a quick question, is, is that what we currently do for the snow removal?
Yes.
And do we do that within twenty-four hours, or do we do it within forty-eight? I, I wasn't sure about that.
I can't recall, Kim, do you know offhand if it's twenty-four or forty-eight with the snow removal?
For some reason, I think it's twenty-four, I'm not sure that we make it out there, but...
I think it is twenty-four, but I don't want to miss after the snow.
It's actually twenty, they get noticed twenty-four hours after the snow stops, and then they have twenty-four hours from notice to do it, so technically forty-eight hours after the snow stops falling.
So I, I guess then I would probably think that being consist, if you're going to do it, then it would be consistent to do it that way.
So it's twenty-four or forty-eight?
If I could speak on the rubbish, uh, that's twenty-four hours that we give them, rubbish that's brought to the curb, then not picked up, uh, we put a twenty-four hour notice there. Yeah, we tag it, we come back twenty-four hours, check to see if it's still there, if it's, if it's still there, then we, then we pick it up, and we send an invoice.
Okay, and then, again, I'm, I guess I could have to play devil's advocate, so who's going to be stuck doing this job, is what I'm trying to figure out, too, and, and, I mean, I'm just, just asking the questions, because, like I said, I really don't know. So in lieu of the posting, which, I mean, seems like a pretty easy thing to do, now we have to have somebody go around and post these postcards or tape them to the doors, taking pictures, so that we have proof and things like that. Somebody's got to do that job, and I'm just wondering, um, how that would work.
So it'd be our incredible building department team, um, so our code enforcement now essentially would have to, well, we'd have to order, like, some sort of, well, that's kind of a conversation to, want to do a door hanger or some kind of, like, sticker, I know, um, a lot of people have an issue with the, uh, snow stickers because they, like, leave a mark and don't remove very well from the window, um, but outside of that, we would then have to take a picture, document the address, um, they would continue on their rounds. Um, the code enforcement officer would have to come back, um, upload those all into BSNA, and then set a tickler to go out the following day, uh, twenty-four hours later, um, after the timestamp of when their initial notice was posted, um, and then identify that it was not done. Come back and take note of that and inform the contractor, and then get the contractor out to then mow that one specific property, but then when you multiply it, amongst, you know, fifteen to thirty of them, yes, it, it will be a significant amount of work for the building department, but, um, would be consistent among the trash and snow removal.
And they get the twenty-five dollar administrative fee.
Well, for history lesson, we used to do notice, and we had two full-time people, that that's all they did was grass and snow year-round, and the administrative fee was a hundred and twenty-five dollars to cover their cost. So we had a cheaper mowing, it was about a twenty-five to thirty-dollar mowing, but a hundred and twenty-five-dollar admin fee, which is why we moved to this method. So, yeah, just keep that in mind, we, we used to do notice.
And we lowered the cost because we no longer do the notice that way?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so we would have to take that into consideration as well. Just a, just food for thought, I'm just, you know.
Mayor, we also have our building official, John Myers, here, I don't know if you would like him to add on with his experience?
Sure, go ahead.
We've made some changes in the last week, we'll make some in the next couple of weeks. We've sorted out the city into three districts, and we now have three code officers designed to not be rental inspectors, but just code divisions. Each one will be responsible for one complete district. Between the three districts, we have about fourteen thousand parcels, and obviously, in the early part of the growing... And obviously, in the early part of the growing season, that'll be their primary responsibility, not to be proactive, waiting for a phone call. But I mean, to be reactive, but we'll wait for proaction. So we will have them begin to understand, not only for grass, but also for debris. And then number three, for any blight weather issues that need to be corrected. They'll be responsible each day to calculate a number of streets that they cover and then report back, tag houses, and then keep the record of all those details. That'll hopefully start within a week from my office with three people in three vehicles with all the software they may need to be able to activate a proactive blight and grass removal cleanup program.
I think after hearing some of the discussion, I actually would probably, to keep it consistent, I think it would be more consistent to keep it at 24-hour notice. Or ask for that to be the amount of notice required by us because I'm imagining, once it's tagged 24 hours later, it's got to be followed up with whether it's not done. It's not like our contractor for the grass cutter is going to be like right behind that. So realistically, I think us setting it at 24 hours probably will end up working out to be more like 36 or 48.
That is correct. Because if I have somebody in the field and they tag in the morning and then they go back in the morning, that might be a 24-hour. But if they tag in the afternoon, late in the afternoon, and then find out that they have to go through that neighborhood the next day in the morning, then they're not going to get their 24. So they're going to have to wait for the following day to get through that. And then the contractor has to be able to get to that site.
Okay.
Does the contractor cut all seven days of the week?
No, he's been coming in twice a week.
No wonder they got behind 50 yards.
Well, I'd argue with, right now, I guess if we don't really have a list, if we're just cutting once they're six inches, I think with the method we're doing it, I don't even know how you determine if we're behind, I guess, if we're just not noticing anybody.
And I mean, too, I think Ms. Walton was alluding to this point. If we put the notices on, I think part of the goal is they won't have to cut as many on our behalf and maybe we'll save a little bit of money and, you know, having residents get on top of it might actually help us, I guess, catch up a little bit more. Especially if we're tagging seven days a week, not just, they're being identified twice a week when the cutters are here.
I would agree with that, Mayor, because a common problem now is the contractor goes out to the property, they unload the truck and they start making, cutting the lawn. And then, you know, the homeowner comes out and tells them to leave. And they do leave, so.
And I.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say one other detail. Not was your comment related to that specifically? Because I had one other separate detail.
Go ahead.
Okay. The notice on the door, I think we should send. Now, if we have email addresses, I don't know if we, you know, I think email is fine. Well, at the court, we're doing that too, even, you know, where I work on my day job. Or else mail, because if it is like owned by a bank or owned by, you know, we want to get something to somebody. Or if it's a rental property, then that someone else is responsible for the lawn. Hopefully, we want to make sure, I think, someone else gets the notice too, so they know about it. Obviously, it's going to take time, like you said, and it might get cut even before they see it. But then hopefully, then they fix it at that point so people know, I think.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
We sadly have a very low number of email addresses, contact info. Historically, the city has not been collecting those. We found this out during the COVID pandemic when there were all these grants available with very short time limits. But we were unable to email notifications to either businesses or residents. It is something that we are working on, but we're basically starting, if we have 20, 30%, we're lucky. So unfortunately, you know, the tag on the door is going to be the fastest notice.
I have a question that is probably silly, but that's all right. I don't want to go home wandering. Okay, I live on Jupiter and I get a, that's a makeup street. So I get a notice that my grass is more than six inches tall and I have 24-hour notice. And this silly company that already works two days a week probably is going to come out to my house in four, three, four, five days. I cut my grass. And this company comes out and they don't cut it. So they just cross it off and say, "Well, okay, we don't charge," or will they still charge?
No, they do not charge for the properties that they do not cut. So, but it would essentially be transitioning the system that we have, where we would have to provide the notice, the addresses to the contractor of the properties that have reached the 24-hour notice and that we've already tagged. So right now, they're operating and going through the city, through their districts, and then addressing the complaints that we submit to them. But it would essentially have to change that entire process by us providing a list of what to cut versus how they're operating now and then just us sharing the addresses of complaints that we've received. So I know mainly, we send the list of complaints. They have like a system that can map out where the properties are and then they know the target areas of where to cut essentially. And they've kind of been working clockwise throughout the city just to make sure that they're hitting all areas. But if there are certain areas on a day, they will go out to attack the areas once they've mapped the addresses out. But that would completely change with the required notice.
One last question, Mr. Mayor. The $125, and then there's an additional 25. $125 goes, everybody goes to the contractor or do we get some of that?
The contractor gets the 125. The city gets 25.
If I may, so the city, if going out to tag, would obviously have to have a higher administrative fee to cover those costs.
Absolutely.
And also to be prepared that if code enforcement tags on a Monday and goes back on a Tuesday and adds it to the list, there is a very good chance, at the best, the contractor will get to it Thursday or Friday. So it's not going to be an immediate response. So everybody's aware of that.
I.
Go ahead.
Oh, I still think at this point, I'm in favor of having the notice. And then I think the discussion on administrative fees, that really goes to us setting our fee schedule. So I think that would sort of be a separate. And after we make the change, administration will have a chance to, I guess, evaluate that. Because I imagine there'll be a recommendation when that comes around.
Well, I think the discussion was good and the least way to start, we'll get a 24-hour notice on it. That's a start. If we get any deeper, I'm going to go into a negative mode about who you hired, but I don't want to do that.
I do.
So let's settle with just the notice on the door.
Okay.
Mayor, is the council then looking for an ordinance amendment for 24-hours notice?
Yes.
Yes.
And do we want to include anything in there? For instance, what Darren had indicated, lawn-cutting crew shows up, you know, it's after the 24 hours and a person comes out and says, "Get off my property. I'm going to cut my lawn." They say, "Fine." They drive away. The person says, "No, I'm not cutting my lawn." And now we still have the same problem. Do we address that in the ordinance? Or do we want to handle that just maybe with a policy?
I don't know that we should address that in the ordinance. I was thinking that maybe the ordinance should clarify that the administrative fee is assessed if it's not cut in time. And then if they get out there and cut it, then we just don't charge the cost for the mower. But we've had to go through the steps administratively of getting that all done. Does that make sense?
It does. So the council's looking for, then, the administrative fees will still be assessed if lawn is not cut after 24.
That is what makes sense to me. Kind of just knowing that there's an opportunity that after 24 hours, you know, we send someone out there and it's still not cut. But we're still sending a contractor to that location who then might not end up needing to do it. I mean, I don't know if council feels the same way. I'm just, it seems like I could see that happening.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that.
Maybe put that in a separate section. So if council wants to just scratch it out, make it easy.
Yeah, leave us options, I guess.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I also ask, just for clarification? Is there any changes in regards to posting in the paper? There's a question from Councilmember Curly about no one reading the Macomb Daily. Is that still a requirement that the council is looking for? Because, I mean, posting the Macomb Daily is almost $1,000 and it's only going to go up. So if we're not reading that or utilizing it, do we want to use our own channels? Or do we want to keep that in the ordinance and have that expectation to post it in the Macomb Daily every year?
I'm okay with getting rid of that, to be honest.
Well, actually, I did want to ask a specific question about that. Look, I haven't looked this closely, I guess, at this ordinance in a long time. But I think this letter actually is only written to vacant properties. So this, like, is specifically only, like, addressed basically to vacant property owners, this notice that's in the ordinance, not to all property owners. Like, it basically sounds like you can ignore this if your property is not vacant. Right? It says to all owners, occupants, or possessors of vacant property. According to the assessment records of the city, you appear to be the owner of the above-described vacant property. Right, so, and this is the one that we put in the Macomb Daily then, right?
No, so the third page is the notice to the Macomb Daily. And on the right-hand side, you should see the language from the ordinance listing that it's not the letter form that's in the ordinance. So the ordinance lists that we either mail this to the vacant properties or in lieu thereof, publish a notice once a week for two successive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation. I don't know if that's first.
I guess I'm just reading it directly out of, yeah, see vacant property. Yeah, no, this, right? It says this is to all owners, occupants, or possessors of vacant property. Like this note, yeah, because this is the notice that's in here, right?
Yeah, but I think what she's saying is it's that or in the alternative, posting in the newspapers. So we're not mailing.
This is the posting in the newspaper.
Yeah, so that's why we wouldn't be.
I'm just saying the current one, separate from what we're about to discuss doing right now, we only make a notice to vacant property owners, right? Like this notice that was in the paper is to vacant property owners, right? So then, what about non? I mean, so then, if we're saying this is the notice for every? Okay, so that's required, but so there's no notice required for non-vacant property owners at all then, at any point in the year? I guess currently.
That's how I understood it.
Okay, okay. Well, I wasn't grasping that last meeting.
Mayor and council, if I can add to that, I support that that's what it's written as it's designed. However, I do recommend and support the city manager's position that if we're going to be proactive and we're going to energize a very formidable approach of someone targeting our property, whether it's a door post or it's a letter, that letter is going to identify the new ordinance design that we're going to create with an address so that when someone would like to appeal or challenge the ruling, it'll be defended by the article that is posted on their property, that we have the right to come and take care of this. And so on that basis, we won't have to have a legal battle with them because we will identify that ordinance that we've rewritten and the time and the fee structure upon that posting that we give them on that house. And then we'll be able to not just have a sticker, but actually identification every time we take care of a property.
I was just clearing up what we do now. I certainly don't propose we keep doing that. I guess, if I was giving that feeling. Yeah, I think getting rid of the newspaper publishing is fine by me. Because especially, we've had, long, long ago, we had a discussion about how, I think there's somewhere in the charter where it requires it to, essentially, the definition requires it to be in the Macomb Daily. And we did that for the special assessments, I think. We were paying like $40,000 to publish a 10-page thing or something in the Macomb Daily. And we couldn't do the East Sider even, even though, well, before the pandemic, I would have said everybody got the East Sider. But I no longer ever get the East Sider unless the city puts something in it and then they do actually deliver me a copy. But I think there's a good portion of the city that doesn't get the East Sider any longer either. But yes, I guess, long story short, I don't think for this ordinance, this sort of thing we need to, I don't believe we need to put in the newspaper.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, if I may, there is a declaration of nuisance in this ordinance that says all weed, grass, brush on any property is hereby declared to be public nuisances. The notice for the publication is just for vacant, but yeah, the rest are declared public nuisances. Again, we're, I think, all in favor of tagging the properties and giving time, of course.
I have another question I'd like to ask.
Sure.
I think our building inspector, our building department, Mr. Myers, maybe you could answer this for me. So some people have put signs on their lawn that say "No mow may," save the bees or something along those lines. How do we handle something like that? Just out of curiosity.
Our ordinance will override that request.
Okay. So it would still.
The law of the city have overriding someone's personal request.
Can you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
The ordinance that is written will override that request of an individual. Please don't cut it in the month of May.
I was just using that as an example. I know communities have done that. They formally adapted it. So if the council formally adopted "may" as a "no mow may," then we would follow that directive and not enforce. But if that's not done or brought forward,
and not enforce, but if that's not done or brought forward, then we would follow the ordinance.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that. I was not suggesting that, no, no.
And if it's not done, there'll be more than fifty yards not done.
No, I was just asking, just random question. Done.
I'd like the bees too, plant flowers.
I was just gonna say, plant some flowers in the flower area of your lawn, that'll trap bees in.
All right, well, Ms. Chalbry, I think you have the direction you probably need? All right, did anyone have anything else on the discussion of the grass ordinance? Then we'll move right on to a discussion on community garden, parking lot, maintenance. Did anyone want to open this up?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion, then, if there's a second, then we'll have discussion. Move to authorize administration to obtain bids for the reconstruction of the parking lot at the East Point Community Garden using hot mix asphalt.
Did anyone have any discussion on this one?
Well, yeah, the discussion I have, it's, first of all, it's the city's parking lot. It's not the garden's parking lot. So by a no-brainer maintenance, we, if it's in that bad of a shape, and I guess it is, then we have to fix it. It's no different than if our parking lot out here was in shambles, that we would, we would fix it, so I don't know, you know. I, I think all of us have been to the community garden up here, and if folks are watching, I hope they're watching, I hope it's working, and y'all sitting out here haven't been to there, just go there, walk around, and if there's somebody there, particularly go on Saturday. There is so much dedication by the individuals who are there, taking the time and the love that they have for our community garden, and it is a community garden. There are so many people involved in it, and I don't have a one over there, but I have a lot of friends, so I'm waiting till the tomatoes get ripe. Now, not the little tiny ones, I don't want anything, I want to put them on a sandwich, so I'm gonna wait till the, oh, you're smiling now, thank you. That's it.
I had one comment, Mr. Mayor. So I did, I stopped by and saw the finished parking lot over at the county facility where they did do the permeable or pervious pavement over there, and I thought that was, well, it looks nice, it's, like, the design's kind of cool, how it's set up, but also it's better for, well, our, our storm sewers, I should say, and especially this being on Nine Mile, any rainwater is going into the sewer system eventually to GLWA, and we're paying a sewage bill on it. So if we did do the pervious pavement or permeable, I guess we do say both of them may be in here, different parts. I know it's obviously more expensive, but I'd hope that also businesses consider them, because it helps with the sewer system, will have less water going down, you know, less sewage, you know, we saw the horrible video here, any less sewage we can put in Lake St. Clair, that would be great. Right now, we do it way too often and way too much. So I guess that's, I think we certainly, Councilman Curly, I agree with you, that we certainly should fix the parking lot, but I guess I was going to maybe push for the permeable pavement.
I was going to ask, and I don't, you know, I actually don't know if administration would know this, is what they, what they put over on Beacons Field, it's, it's sort of, is it like hexagons or just?
Some sort of geometric, yeah.
Yeah, with, with, I don't know if that's the same as, what did they call it in here? Permeable pavement? I'm not sure if they were looking at the same kind of type of material.
Yeah, I actually asked, asked Ryan the same question, and essentially, in engineering terms, he said yes, it would be similar to the design that is over on Beacons Field.
And how long does the permeable pavement last?
I mean, I can ask, I don't know offhand, I can certainly ask him and then follow up with council, I don't know an answer.
Aaron would know.
I don't know that he would.
I don't know if I know that answer. Greg, my supervisor, he may know that answer.
Not a whole lot of it in this area, they started to become more common, but most of the studies I've seen have been out of state, unless where it's lasting about the same amount of time as HLA.
Thank you.
It doesn't have a bad impact on the environment?
Fifteen years, fifteen years.
Yeah, I think I was gonna, I know I Googled it a little bit, I don't remember whenever we last talked about, maybe when we originally talked about the urban seed or something on the agenda. I thought it was even longer, but I, well, I have a feeling I think it'd be like, for sure, minimum fifteen, because it's gonna have very minimal traffic also compared to like your average, you know, concrete, right? You're just gonna have a handful of cars parking once in a while, nobody's even driving, like, through it. Obviously, we might drop off some trucks worth of, you know, mulch or something, but still, I think it's gonna be a pretty minimal amount of traffic.
I did just search, Portland, Oregon is one of the communities that uses them very often and is recommending them across their community, and it does say on their website that they last over twenty years.
That's already got my attention.
Yes. Well-
What do you think, Harvey?
You know, yeah, we, yeah, we, we probably shouldn't always look for the cheapest one, and that's what they're recommending, the cheapest bid. If we have, you said twenty-year life on that, and, Councilman, you're right, if you want to amend my motion, I made the motion, and they're, they're specifically saying use a hot mix asphalt, probably because it's the cheapest. That's the only reason. So it's our responsibility, if that's the only reason, and I'm, please don't, I'm not condemning you, that's your job, but if, if that's all, if that's the only recommendation because it's the cheapest, then we have a right, we have a responsibility to, to check into that, and I think we did. So, Councilman, if you want, if you want to amend my motion, I would certainly agree to it.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, go ahead. You want to amend the motion? You want, you can't amend my motion.
Can or can't, you're saying?
Can, you can.
Okay, you want me to read, reread it then?
Sure.
All right, I'll-
We got a lot of time.
The motions then to authorize, it's only eight thirty, not too bad so far. Motion to authorize administration to obtain bids for the reconstruction of the parking lot at the East Point Community Garden using permeable pavement.
All right, that's, and I'll just note that I would have, I'm not looking at this as between one twenty and two oh seven. I think we should probably at least go with standard concrete to begin with, so I'm, I think the extra amount for the permeable, I'd like to see what the bid's coming at, Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
I, I do have another question, if lungs are on the community garden. So help me out, guys, didn't we get a, an email about talking to the people who run the garden about leasing or, that's the wrong word, probably, what?
It is lease, yeah, that was a meeting we had back in May, and I'm in the process of preparing a lease that I'll bring back to the council.
Oh, you're gonna bring it back to the council?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item K, approval for administration to create and publish requests for proposal for the master plan rewrite. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I guess I, I had one comment first. I was wondering what everyone thought about asking a quote from McKenna, our current planners, since we work closely with them, they wrote the current one, and we might not need, like, a whole rewrite, you know, the law requires you at least review it every five years. We had a pandemic for most of that five years, so that really affected us moving forward on some things, for sure, you know, even if not, like, directly things we had planned, but indirectly, just on the economy and people's lives over the last few years. I thought we at least do that and kind of see, see where we go with that. I know there's a bunch of recommendations in here, but I thought maybe that may be the most sense going forward.
I'd be fine with that. Get a quote from McKenna, and then maybe at the next meeting, look at it and decide, you know, I don't know, that might be a motion to waive competitive bidding and award the master plan contract to McKenna, if, if we're happy with that.
Even their, their original, like, the original agreement, we do make with them too, it says professional, like, they offer their hourly rated services for professional planning and related work in the maintenance of the master plan, and da, da, da.
Do we need a motion then for that, or just ask administration?
No, we can, we can certainly request that. Are there any specifics that it's requested in terms of, like, extended engagement times or anything that council would like to see in that proposal, so that we can get an accurate cost from McKenna? So, and I think we listed here too, there are additional things that can be listed in, in a master plan, which includes like a dedicated housing plan, a transportation plan, a sustainability plan. It's kind of up to council, if there's anything specific that you'd want included in that, so that we get accurate pricing reflected in that quote. We just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to provide that information, so we can solicit the best, best quote for services.
Which, oh, okay, you're talking about these three bullet, or the four bullet points in the brief?
It seems like it would make sense to maybe just ask for a quote to an update of the master plan, and maybe just ask for those bullet points, a separate, I guess, cost associated with adding those. Does that make sense? All right, any other discussion on that? Then moving on to item L, approval for proposed citywide garage sale. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we designate August sixteenth through eighteenth, 2024, third week of August, as we've been doing it, as Citywide Garage Sale Day is in the city of East Point.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item M, approval of special event application Better Life Church fireworks, July third, 2024. Would anyone like to make a motion, or did anyone want to open up a comments?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I could open up with a comment, I guess, on this one too. I was just looking back, I remember we talked about this kind of at length last year, and we did make a substantial motion, you'll see it's like half a page long here, which basically, I think, reflects the first option of the two recommended motions in the packet, and I think, I guess, long story short was, I think I'd be in favor of the, the first motion. It's similar to last year's.
I did have a question, why is the deposit amount have like an and/or?
I think they wanted us to pick one.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Blum? Assuming that was you. Oh, I thought that'd be part of the, oh, Mr. DPW?
It's listed here that if, if they opt to utilize J.J. Mish, that they would, they would deposit twenty-four hundred dollars, otherwise the twelve hundred dollar deposit would be listed, and then if the cleanup costs are going to be J.J. Mish's, then we would ask for the twenty-four hundred dollars.
Okay. Last year, we asked for a deposit of two thousand, in case there was cleanup that needed to happen, and then they got their money back, assuming they cleaned up. I don't know what did happen, you know, either way.
And I will say, because I think they did an incredible job, that everything was clean, and we did not utilize city services, so we, we thank them for that.
All right, would you like to make a motion then?
Sure, all right, I'll move, we approved the special event application for the Better Life Church fireworks event on July third, 2024, contingent upon the following being completed one week prior to the event on June twenty-sixth, 2024, submission of a valid business license for Great Lakes fireworks, submission of certificates of insurance naming the city of East Point as additional insured by Better Life Church, the amount of one million dollars, and by Great Lakes fireworks, the amount of one million dollars, a deposit in the amount of, wait, so what were we saying, both? Sorry, I'm paused, paused on my motion.
Yes, it's the first number, if J.J. Mish is not utilized for cleanup, it's the second number if they do utilize them for cleanup.
Because it would be a holiday, I think, right, as well, because it'd be the fourth then. Okay, deposit in the amount of the twelve hundred and twenty-four slash twenty-four hundred dollars, depending on the option, as stated by our city manager, Mariah Walton, to be paid to the finance department to ensure the proper cleanup of the park, applicable permits to be obtained through the city for any vending and sales, tents and/or food trucks, and a plan showing that a water source will be available at the site, and that there will be sufficient barriers or security around the blast slash safety zone.
Is there support? Support. Motion and support. Any other comments on it?
I'm not repeating that.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item N, approval of special event application First Amendment Day celebration, September sixth, 2024. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I would move to approve the special event application for the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression First Amendment Day celebration on September sixth, 2024, contingent upon the following. The organizers and all vendors each supplying insurance naming the city of East Point as an additional insured in the amount of no less than one million dollars, and the organizers obtained permits for all food trucks at least one week prior to the event.
I'll second that.
All right, any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item O, approval of special event application, East Point Community Baby Shower, July twentieth, 2024. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll move, we approve the special event application for the Betty Harris Foundation and Lift Up a Child, East Point Community Baby Shower on July twenty, 2024.
Support.
All right, any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item P, approval of special event application Rockin' Summer Night, August fourteenth, 2024. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sir, I would move to approve the special event application for Rare Rockin' Summer Night, event on August fourteenth, 2024.
Turned into a radio DJ there. I'll second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, item Q, approval resolution number twenty-four dash nineteen eighty-three to declare June nineteenth as Juneteenth, 2024. Well, first, would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll prove we, or motion we approve resolution number twenty-four dash nineteen eighty-three to declare June nineteenth as Juneteenth, 2024.
Support.
All right, and Councilman DeMonico, you added this to the, do you, would you like to read out the resolution?
It's fine with me, unless someone else wanted to.
Go ahead.
All right, resolution declaring June nineteenth as Juneteenth, 2024, whereas on January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States, whereas the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Lee at Appomattox Courthouse on April ninth, eighteen sixty-five, whereas this news reached Texas when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay with Union troops. It was on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five that he announced, people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. Whereas celebration of the end of slavery, which became known as Juneteenth, is the oldest known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity, and whereas on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of the American dream. Now therefore, it be resolved that the members of the East Point City Council declare June nineteenth as Juneteenth, 2024, in the city of East Point, and urge all citizens to join in this celebration.
Thank you very much, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right, moving on to payrolls and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
Is that me, because Councilman Baker's not here? I'll motion we pay the bills in the amount of two million, five hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and six cents.
Support.
All right, did anyone have any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second hearing of the public, the second hearing of the public is now open, would anyone wish to be heard?
Karen Morage, an East Point resident, I'm really disappointed that you all approved that special permit for the fireworks, when I specifically brought to your attention, these traditional fireworks emit the same toxic chemicals that wildfires do. It's dangerous, it is dangerous for the environment. It is also harmful to people with PTSD. It also terrifies wildlife. So, you know, there's, every year, these damn fireworks, you know, you got birds fleeing for their lives, they're flying out of the trees when they really should be roosting for the night, and they're just flying all over the place. Now, just because you don't see it yourself, there have been birds who have died from the fright, and also wildlife that have died from the fright. I've lost track how many people I have talked to who have dogs that said their dogs were just shaking uncontrollably because of the fireworks. Dogs have run away, cats have run away, people with PTSD, and what is this other than it's a money grab? St. Clair Shore is recently, for their fireworks show around Memorial Day weekend, they did the smart thing, they did laser fireworks. That does not harm anybody. It doesn't harm the wildlife, it doesn't harm the birds, it doesn't harm people with PTSD. Why? Why do you want to allow something that is- doesn't harm people with PTSD. Why? Why do you want to allow something that is going to cause this much harm to the planet? We share this planet with the other species, but yet the human species acts like we're the only planets on this... We're the only species on this earth, and that is not okay. It's not okay at all. Because as long as there's this mindset, "I don't care, you know, play now, pay later," what do the kids today have to look forward to when they get to be our age? What kind of planet's going to be left for them?
You have 30 seconds.
It's basically going to be gutted. And then, just quickly to tie this in with nuisance tenants, I guarantee you, there's going to be a lot of nuisance tenants who are going to be shooting off fireworks in the streets. It happens every year. And no, they do not have their landlord's permission. So quickly amend the nuisance tenant ordinance. If the property owner is not going to abate the nuisance within 24 hours, fine them. Start with $150 fine and work up, so it's not... The burden's not on the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed, and we'll move on to mayor and council reports. Councilman Curly?
Thank you. A couple things. Brought this up the last meeting with the water filters, and I didn't get an agreement with the administration. By the end of September, someone's going to have to go through the county to get the water filters, and we're probably going to... I don't know how many you have right now at the three locations, but you have a lot. And I cannot understand why, as the city manager, you're in charge, why you can't say, "Well, we have a few left, and we're going to keep them here." Maybe you'll take all of them over to the library since they're open more hours than you are, we are, at City Hall, and not force the people to go through that whole malarkey of getting hold of the city or the county. So I'm asking you to please reconsider and keep those here until they're gone. Number two, tomorrow, Juneteenth, right? 4 to 7 here at City Hall. Please come. Going to be a lot of fun. Number three, the cruise. Oh, boy. It was... You know, the cruise itself was really great. Saturday was a wonderful time. But let me give you a little story. We had some problems. But how many have you seen Gone with the Wind? Raise your hand. One person, oh, you guys. Are you kidding me? Anyway, when they were filming Gone with the Wind, there were some terrible problems. Fist fighting, firing directors. It was horrible. But guess what? When they got it done and edited and put it on, people thought it was one of the greatest films in the world. And on Saturday, despite the problems we had with ourselves, the committee, it came off really well, so we're happy about that. This coming Saturday, there's a memorial for Jeff Lubick. You all remember Jeff Lubick. Jeff was on the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, and I do not think... I do not think there was anybody that was more learned than Jeff was about how to run the planning commission, how to run the zoning board of appeals. So that's going to be Saturday at Cross Lutheran Church on Utica Road, 35851. 35851 Utica Road, and it starts at 10 o'clock in the morning this coming Saturday. If you have the time, make an appearance and say a few prayers for Jeff.
Councilman? Council... Oh, I thought it was... Is it... It's the 22nd, not the 29th?
Oh.
I had 29th in mind.
You got 29th?
In my calendar.
It's not this side. It's on the 29th. Okay.
I think it is the 29th.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, a week, just a week. I just want to make sure if anyone was writing it down.
That's...
It's a week from Saturday.
You know, I'm going to go home. I'm not going to turn on the television. I might have a couple of Kill Curly wine, but I opened my mouth so many times tonight that was wrong information, so I apologize. But no, I don't want to apologize. I'm done.
All right, Councilwoman Shadlik.
I'd just like to mention the Taking Back Pride that East Point Free Store is having as well. Tim Kanias had mentioned that it's June 28 from 5 to 8 p.m., and that's at the East Point Community Garden, so I would encourage everyone to attend that, and check out the garden while you're there as well. Beautiful space to have something like that. So, very happy to see something like that going on. Congratulations to Abby, our new librarian, and that's all I have.
All right, Councilman DeMonica?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, congrats to Abby also, and welcome to our new building director. Welcome. And then, yeah, hope everyone had a great Father's Day and enjoyed the cruise, I guess, even if, you know, went the way of Gone with the Wind internally. Hope everyone still enjoyed externally the cruise, and happy Juneteenth tomorrow and happy Independence Day. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Happy Juneteenth tomorrow. Hope to see some people out there, and I'm glad to see everyone who went out to the cruise. I thought it also went really well. I didn't know about all the fist fighting behind the scenes, but Harvey looks okay, so I'd hate to see the other guy. So that's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion we go into closed session for settlement strategy pursuant to MCL 15.2681E, and then also collective bargaining pursuant to MCL 15.26A1C.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Yes.
And I did hear Councilmember Shadlik first.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
All right, going into closed session at 8:53.
I think it's, uh, say something in my files.
Already?
It's not too late.
So it's good to me?
And I know it's Friday. Yeah, it's up to seventy-six now.
We won't be far. We'll go stand there. Promise if you left it there.
Oh, we're all here. Uh, calling the meeting back to order at nine fifty-two. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll support that motion to adjourn.
You get that, Kim? Harvey made the motion.
Moved by Harvey, supported by Cardi. Please call her all.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Monaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Meeting adjourned at nine fifty-two.